Good evening. I would like to call the Waipahu Neighborhood Board meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Just wanted to go over the rules of speaking. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to raise their hand and when recognized by the chair to address all your comments to the chair and approach the podium. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments under three minutes and those giving reports are urged to keep your reports under three minutes as well if possible. And everyone, if I can ask to please silence all electronic devices at this time. Thank you. I'd like to start off the meeting with an introduction of the board members, starting from my right.
Aloha, Jordina Ferreira, at large.
Good evening. Aloha, Nathan Chang, Sub-District Three.
Good evening, Jayden Chang, Sub-District Three.
Good evening, Daryl Macha, at large.
Good evening, Tara Tombaga, Sub-District Three.
Hello, Debbie Seago, at large.
Aloha, Dave Beers, Sub-District Two.
Aloha and good evening, Danny DeGrassi, at large.
Thank you, board. Next on our agenda, we're going to start off with our first responders' reports. Can I have the Honolulu Fire Department?
Good evening, Captain Tommy Elsie from the Waipahu Fire Station. On our statistics for August 2024, for fires, we had one structure fire, six wildland fires, nine nuisance fires that include rubbish fires outside a structure vehicle, we had three cooking fires and 11 activated alarms with no fire. For emergencies, we had 224 medical emergencies, two motor vehicle collisions with pedestrians, 10 motor vehicle crash collisions, and we had no mountain rescues, no ocean rescues, and no hazardous material incidents. Our fire safety tip for the month is move over for emergency vehicles. Drive with caution and obey all traffic laws, including the move over law, to help protect our first responders while performing their duties near or on a roadway. This is more than a public courtesy, it is the law. Hawaii revised statutes 291(c)27 requires the driver of a vehicle that is approaching an emergency vehicle that is stopped for an emergency investigation of a possible traffic violation, rendering assistance to a police officer, or other official duties as indicated by the flashing emergency lights of the stopped emergency vehicle shall slow down to a reasonable and prudent speed that is safe under the circumstances of an emergency road situation ahead. If necessary, the driver shall come to complete stop before making a lane change into the adjacent lane if necessary, and if it is safe to do so, or if possible, to two lanes over which leaves one lane between the driver and the emergency vehicle. Please note, emergency vehicles mean police, fire, EMS, ocean safety, fire service patrol, tow trucks, and even some state and county vehicles while personnel are working. Do you have any questions at this time?
Thank you, Captain. Thank you for that safety tip as well. Do we have any questions from the board? Mr. DeGracia?
Thank you, Chair. Just for clarification, that seems like quite a few rubbish and trash fires. What exactly is the cause for that? Is that people throwing away, for example, burning charcoal into trash? Or what would be the cause for that? And is there a way to reduce the number of trash fires?
Actually, a lot of our trash fires are homeless in the area. So it's just burning rubbish either on the side of the road, like you mentioned, or within the brush areas. Any more questions?
Any more questions from the board? Do we have any questions from our audience? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Captain. Next is the Honolulu Police Department.
Aloha, good evening. My name is Lieutenant Kyoni Hong, representing Pro City. I just got assigned there about a month ago, so this is my first meeting with you all and hope to look forward to working with you in the future. Regarding the stats for the month of August compared to July, motor vehicle thefts, there were 11 compared to 11 in July. Burglaries, there were three, down from six. Thefts, there were 36, a little bit up from 31 in July. And car break-ins, there were 17 compared to 10. The total cost for service for August was $2,257 compared to $2,149. The tip of the month is whenever you get into a vehicle, please make sure to use your seat belts and make sure your KKR are buckled in too. Regarding the UNVs or car break-ins, I looked at some of the cases. A few were pride locks of locked vehicles. Some were vehicles that were left unlocked. And a bunch of them were obvious work trucks, so I believe the motive was to steal tools that were inside. One of the UNVs or car break-ins that I'm going to highlight is not necessarily a theft, but just a synopsis is, on August 10th, 2024, at about 1:00 p.m. at the Costco Waipo parking lot, an argument over a parking stall between a 60-year-old male and a 30-year-old male ensued. During the argument, the 60-year-old male reached into the vehicle of the 30-year-old male and grabbed him by his neck, causing pain. Bystanders broke up the altercation and police were called, at which time the 60-year-old male was arrested. The case was administratively closed due to the fact that evidence was lacking, a conviction for what would be a felony offense. The stories were conflicting and key witnesses left the area and did not provide a statement. So that just was to show, just be careful with road rage. It's not worth it. Because although the injuries are minor, due to the fact that the intrusion was into a vehicle, it's considered a felony. So that could have turned out kind of bad for that suspect had the case not been dropped. But if there's any questions at this time, I'm available.
Do we have any questions for Honolulu Police Department from the board? Questions? Any questions from our audience? Seeing none, thank you, Lieutenant. Thank you for joining us and welcome to Waipahu.
Thank you.
Next, I have the military report.
Can everybody hear me? So, good evening to the board members, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Corinne McClellan, and I'm the new commander of the 599th Transportation Brigade at Wheeler Army Airfield. I wanted to come and meet everyone in person and say hello, as we travel a lot with our brigade. And I'm here to deliver tonight's report from U.S. Army Hawaii. So for the training advisory piece, U.S. Army Garrison publishes a monthly training advisory. Remaining this month will continue training in the East Range area with Ranger and Jungle Tactics. This is a small arms blank fire training through September the 27th. Training will be during the day only from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. An updated report of this will be published in early data in October the 1st. And to receive the report when it's published, at the start of each month, you can request a copy via email. It's the USA-G Hawaii email, and we provided a flyer on the table with the email and phone numbers for everyone's reference. So upcoming training events is JPMRC. So the 25th Infantry Division will conduct a training exercise in coordination with the Joint Pacific Multinational Readiness Center from 7 to 16 October. Currently, the 25th ID is expecting 1,000 of our multinational partners and participants from countries like Malaysia, New Zealand, Indonesia, Thailand, the U.K., Japan, Singapore, the Maldives, Australia, and Canada. Please expect an increase in military convoy and vehicle traffic starting this week. An increase in aircraft noise and combat simulations is anticipated also during training operations from the 7th to the 16th. There will also be an increase in helicopter, fixed wing, and unmanned aerial aircraft systems specifically around Wheeler Army Airfield and Dillingham Military Reservation during the exercise. So as a reminder, there is a number for the community concern line, and you can share any feedback on that line. So we would like to thank the community for your understanding and your patience. Additional information with respect to this training and all the phone numbers is, as I said, on the flyer, on the small flyer on the table there for your reference. And then lastly, a job fair. All excited about job fairs. So U.S. Army Garrison Hawaii will hold its next hiring fair on 8th of October at the Lily Hua High School from the 8:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. This is open to the public. Advanced applicants can go to the Hawaii MWR.com website to learn of openings and how to apply online. Walk-ins are welcome and should bring two references, proof of ID, social security card, and a resume or an application. So pending any questions from anyone in the board, that concludes my report, and thank you all for your evening, and it was a pleasure to meet the folks I got to meet.
Do we have any questions from our board members? Any questions from our audience? Seeing none. Thank you, Commander, and also welcome to Waipahu. And we look forward to your reports and then joining us monthly. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Next item on our agenda is the residents and community concerns. Want to start off with any board members, if you have any resident community concerns brought to you by your constituents or yourself?
On behalf of a board member, Andrade, she wanted the board to, or she wanted to ask for the board's blessing on behalf of Village Park Association. They are looking at December 15th for the Waipahu Christmas Parade.
Correct. Thank you. Any other board members? Audience, do we have any residents here present this evening? Have any concerns? Would like to share? None? Seeing none? Oh, we do. Please state your name, introduce yourself, and go ahead.
Okay. Aloha, Chair, board members, and community. My name is Karen Owana, and I'm the Director of Advancement for Kulia Academy. We're a brand-new charter school that opened our doors in July to 106th grade students. Our school is located in Kalihii. However, we do have students residing in your Neighborhood Board District, so we decided to, you know, come and share about our program. What makes our program a little bit different from other public charter schools is that we focus on a curriculum with artificial intelligence and data science. We're gauging to prepare our students for high-paying jobs in the high-tech world. So we have students who are already programming and flying drones, doing computer programming, of course, mastering augmented reality, and connecting with their communities through e-cyber mission. Our capacity is 100, and we're filled this year. However, next year, we will be, we are already accepting applications for next year. We'll be accepting another 100 students for our 6th grade, and we'll also be including a 7th grade class. And then every year thereafter, until we reach the 12th grade, we'll add another 100 students. Long term, we will, after we hit our 12th grade, then we'll move down to having 5th, 4th, 3rd, until we have a K through 12 school. If you have any questions, or if you would like more information about our program, or perhaps you know someone who might be interested in having their student attend our program, you can contact us at info@kuliaacademy.org. We also have some YouTube uploads, so if you'd like to see what we're doing, you know, you can take a look at those as well.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions from the board? Go ahead.
Just one question. Maybe you could share with the community and the board. What are some of the admission requirements?
Because it is a public charter school, it's free of charge. There's no, in part, the purpose we did decide on having a school like that is because many times private schools are offering this to students. However, those who may not have the financial ability to would not be exposed to these types of curriculums. So it's no charge. If anything, they would have to pay for their uniforms. That's about it.
Any question? Any questions from our audience? Thank you, Ms. Owana. Former legislature also. Thank you. Good to see you again.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, we do have a presentation by the Queen's Health Systems. Okay, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Sandra Lee G. Brandon. I'm the Vice President of Behavior Health and Medicine at the Queen's Health System. And we just wanted to inform you that, well, thank you for having me. We just wanted to inform you, October 8th, Kahimahala, Sutter's Kahimahala, will become Queen's Medical Center Kahimahala. We're acquiring, in case you don't know, the 88-bed facility. It's a freestanding behavioral health hospital, the only one here in Hawaii, currently serving children and adolescents for residential acute care. And so on October 8th, we will continue on that mission to provide services to children and adolescents for residential care, and acute care services will be moved over to the Punchbowl Campus. This has been about a two-and-a-half-year journey where Sutter approached Queen's about having to leave the islands and not doing behavioral health care here in Hawaii. So we felt it was important for Queen's to step up and continue behavioral health care as the way it's been done at Kahimahala for the last 50 years. And I'm here happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from our board members? Seeing none. Any questions from our members in the audience? Thank you so much for the update, and feel free to join us again when you do have an update.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our board business. Unfortunately, we do not have quorum, but just wanted to make the announcement that we do have four at-large seats as a board vacancy. So if you know anyone wishing to serve the Waipahu Neighborhood Board, please direct them to the Neighborhood Board website and also join us at our monthly meeting. I'm also going to defer the approval of the minutes due to some unfortunate circumstances, as well as we don't have quorum to vote on the minutes. So start off with our elected officials. The mayor's rep could not be here today, but we do have Zoidell with his report.
Just going to read the month's highlights from the mayor's newsletter. The city is taking action to address crime along the Waianae Coast. Nearly 30 brand-new security cameras installed in Chinatown with more underway. Mayor Blangjardi hosts a healing vigil on the anniversary of Maui wildfires back in August. Years of blight on Pensacola Street, the demolition of the Hoarder House. And also, you'll find in the newsletter, the Honolulu name was named "Most Desirable City to Live in the United States." The Fire Department Response Mapping, if you do want more details about incidents on the Fire Department's monthly report, you can actually, there's a website. I'll put this on the Google Docs for everyone to see for the links. And is there any mayor's concerns that I can bring up to the department or to the city department?
Any concerns from our board members? How about our audience? Okay, seeing none. Moving on. I did see council member, he stepped out, but let me, I was going to give him the opportunity to go for first, but follow the agenda. Do we have a representative for council member Matt Wire?
Aloha, Chair, and members of the board. Kelly Anaya from Councilmember Matt Wire's office. Just a couple of things that I wanted to highlight. Councilmember had a great time participating at the Waikeli Elementary Annual Career and College Fair. He had a lot of fun speaking with the students, and he also wanted to give a special shout-out to the Waipahu High School students that also showed up and shared their passion with the elementary school students. Councilmember also wanted to remind everybody that we are in hurricane season, so please be sure to update your emergency kits, secure your homes, and make sure everyone in your family has their emergency procedures up to date and everyone on the same page. And then lastly, Bill 46, which is the empty homes tax. This tax would impose a tax on homes that are vacant for more than six months out of the year. It would also seek to discourage real estate speculation, land banking, and hopefully to encourage the use of vacant properties to help address Oahu's housing needs. This bill passed out of Councilmembers Housing Sustainability and Health Committee, and let's see, I think that's, oh, I'm sorry. And then I know that there was a question, or not question, but concern about the ditch that runs along Kapuna Loop. Just wanted to let you know that DFM Road Maintenance has scheduled that, and they anticipate the work to be done in mid-October. And then I know it was a few months ago what board member DeGracia had asked about the ocean safety department, assuming the HFD vehicles. It is not required in the resolution that I had discussed about that night, so that would be up to the department. If anyone has any questions for council member, I can take them up for him.
Anybody have questions for Councilmember Matt Wire? Seeing none. Thank you, Kelly, for the report.
Thank you for having me.
If I could ask Councilmember Tauba to, you want to go? Since you're here, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Good evening. Chair, board members, neighborhood, hello. Just to highlight and a couple announcements to educate the community about e-bike laws and ways to be safe on the road. My staff and I held an e-bike roundtable at August Irons Elementary School, and it happened on Tuesday, September 10th. I want to say thank you to HPD, the Department of Transportation Services, the Hawaii Bicycle League, and everyone who attended to the share and really honestly talk about how we can help in this challenge. We all know, like, it seems like every other day there's some incident with e-bikes. So I just wish that more people would come out in the community, would come out and learn and get educated. So thank you again. Mark your calendar for Saturday, October 5th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. We're hosting a beautification day to clear our brush and trash next to Waipahu Elementary School, located, you know, at 94465 Waipahu Street. We will provide the supplies for the cleanup. Please bring your own water bottle, hat, long-sleeved shirt, long pants. Wear gloves and shoes recommended. We've been doing the back of Waipahu Elementary now for the last three years, and we're going to continue to be, you know, involved in that area. And hopefully, you guys will start seeing some improvements. We are working with the Native CHNA, I always get them wrong because I'm dyslexic, the Council of Native Hawaiian Advancement. And we're looking at putting a garden in the back there so the kids can participate, and hopefully that'll activate the area so that we can deter some of the things that's happening back there, like illegal dumping and homelessness. Okay, two exciting news. The City Department of Parks and Recreation will open Hans LaRanche in Waipahu this Sunday, September 29th, following the completion of extensive work improvements, including fields, dugouts, bleachers, comfort stations, and parking lots. So on Saturday, October 18th, mark this down, our District 19 will be holding a park beautification at and around Hans LaRange to further the beauty of the park and the surrounding areas. So please bring your family and friends to this beautification day. Let's make a difference together. And I just want to remind everybody, Waipahu High School has their homecoming parade. So Principal Sheets wanted to make sure that, you know, everyone is aware, people watching at home, it's going to be happening Friday, October 18th, from 3:15 to 4:15 p.m. It's about 1.6 miles, so let's go Marathas. Thank you. Questions?
Councilmember, thank you for your report. Any questions from our board members? Go ahead.
Hey, Augie. On, you know, Bill 46, that's the one, the vacant house one, right?
Yeah.
Is it only for the, if the structure is vacant? Like, what if a landowner decides that their taxes are going up, so they tear the house down, and now it's just a vacant lot?
That's a good question. I can get back to you on that. I did vote no, only because I understand the need for affordable housing. My concern has always been the data, you know, and $36,000 seems a lot. I just want to see real data because, you know, I understand the struggle. I understand why it's so hard to live in Hawaii, but I also know that there are lots of local people that bought homes, and, you know, we're going to treat everybody fair. So I'll get that information, and I'll get back to you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Councilmember Tauba?
The camera guy, Fomolelo. I'm just joking.
Any questions from our audience? Seeing none. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your report. Member, excuse me, do we have a representative for Councilmember Val Okamoto? Thank you.
Aloha, First Chair. Aloha, board. What can I say that hasn't already been said? My name is Aaron Wilson. I'm the representative for Councilmember Okamoto. September 4th, we had, we were speaking about the e-bikes. A resolution passed that's going to be sent over to the state legislator, state legislatures. They're, we're asking for them to strengthen and clarify the laws around e-bikes and the e-motocycles. We had another bill of note was Bill 41, passed the second reading today, enhances the current city animal outreach programs. The bill is moving the current Neuter Now program to the Department of Customer Services. That will allow them to adopt administrative rules around that program. And the last bill of note here is Bill 39. It's been sent to the mayor. It relates to building permits. Remove the affidavit requirements when applying for permits, so it should be cutting some of that red tape. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to take that back to the council member.
Do we have any questions for the representative for Councilmember Val Okamoto from the board? How about from our audience? Seeing none. Thank you, sir, for the report.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along. Next item on our agenda is a report from Governor Josh Green's representative.
Aloha, Chair, board members, community members. I'm Chavani Ramos, Governor Green's rep, and also Public Information Officer for the Department of Labor and Industrial Relations. Before I get into Governor's newsletter highlights, I did want to address a question I got from, I think it was board member DeGracia from last meeting regarding if the governor has resources regarding, you know, like, mental health, trauma-related resources. So I provided all of you, and there's copies on the table if any community member wants it to. It's a list of Hawaii mental health and trauma support resources from the governor's Office of Wellness and Resilience. So there's a lot of very detailed and specific resources, so you can take a look at the list and see which one caters to you or is most relevant. But these programs aim to address the growing mental health needs of the community in the wake of traumatic events such as, you know, the Maui wildfires and other crises impacting our local residents. So the governor's office remains committed to providing comprehensive support through these and other resources. And you all have the governor's newsletter here, so just some highlights from that. Governor reflected on the one-year anniversary of the Maui wildfires, emphasizing community strength and ongoing recovery efforts, including housing projects, a new school, and a health clinic on Maui. In July, they, the governor hosted a three-day summit focused on securing federal funding for Hawaii with 510 years participating. Hawaii received approval for over $149 million in federal funding under the broadband equity access end. Access and Employment Program. This funding will help bridge the digital divide across the islands. And another highlight, the Hawaii State Energy Office launched a new interactive webpage to promote the state's decarbonization efforts, providing recommendations to achieve Hawaii's goal of net-zero emissions by 2045. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions you have for Governor or even my department if you have any questions. So, yeah, thank you.
Do we have any questions for the Governor's representative from the board? No questions? Any members in the audience have questions for our Governor's representative? Seeing none, thank you. Okay. Next presenters on our agenda are Senator Michelle Kidani, Senator Henry Aquino, I believe, have submitted their report for review. Also, I do see reports submitted by Representative Cory Chun, and he's here?
Dustin Lee for Representative Chun. Not really a update from our office specifically necessarily, but there is a Central Oahu Regional Park Advisory Committee, and I guess historically, the Waipahu Neighborhood Board has had a, has had a representative. Marty Burke was, and then Representative Chun, while he was on the Neighborhood Board, was the representative, and he's still getting the emails and the agendas, and so if someone would like to be that representative. The meetings are the fourth Monday of every month at 5:00 p.m. at the Corp Aquatic Center. If anyone's interested, we can forward more information to the Chair. Otherwise, I can take back any questions you guys might have.
Do we have any questions in regards to the request for a member to sit on that board? If you can email Chair, myself, and our Neighborhood Assistant, and we can get more information. Unfortunately, we cannot vote on anything this evening, so we'll get back to you.
Okay, great, yeah, we'll do that, thanks.
Thank you so much. Do we have a representative here for Representative Rachel Lamisal? Seeing none, I do see her report. How about represent, someone from Representative Trish Lachica's office? Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Jared Ellis for Representative Lachica. We don't have a report this month, but I'm happy to take any questions you have back to the representative.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Representative Lachica? From our board? Seeing none, from our audience? None, thank you so much for joining.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Anyone here from Representative Elijah Perick's office? Do not see a report as well? Moving along. Anyone from US Representative Ed Case's office? None? How about US Representative Jill Tokura? Okay, right on, moving along. Someone from the Board of Water Supply? Yes, thank you.
Aloha, Chair, Board, Residents, and Guests. Nikki Rodwell from Board of Water Supply. Actually, I used to be a rep pre-COVID, so now you're going to have me again. Just a short report tonight. There was one water main break in the Waipahu area in August. It was on August 27th, and it was a 12-inch PVC water main installed in 2001. It broke at 941014 Ko'uka Boulevard. And then my general announcement is this Saturday, we have our annual Imagine a Day Without Water event. It's going to be from 10:00 to 2:00 at Kapalei Regional Park. I'll give you guys flyers, I have some by the, on the table. But we are going to have more than 15 city, state, and community organizations with interactive activities. We'll have rainbow, rain barrel workshops, seriouscape crafts, and succulent workshops. And then we'll have Camille's Hawaiian food, tropical vi, and some shaved ice booths there as well. Admission is free, open to everybody. If you have any questions about the event, you can go to BoardOfWaterSupply.com/OneWaterHawaii. On the back of the flyer that I have out, there is a map that shows where we're going to be at, so you know where to park. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions and or concerns.
Awesome, thank you. Do we have any questions for Board of Water Supply from our board? Any questions or concerns from our members in the audience? Seeing none, thank you, and welcome back. Look forward to your media, your reports with us monthly. Next on our agenda is Ompo. Member, Board Member DeGracia?
Thank you, Chair. So last month, the Citizens Advisory Committee received several briefings, one of which was on the new Honolulu Complete Streets Vision Zero Action Plan, which essentially is an initiative to reduce the number of traffic fatalities to zero. And we also received a presentation from Oahu MPO on an educational framework for youth engagement in Oahu's transportation planning. Now, this presentation was particularly notable because public participation is a federal requirement of the metropolitan planning organizations, which, according to the Federal Transit Authority, requires meaningful public dialogue with the communities impacted by the proposed action, listening to what impacted communities have to say, responding to comments and concerns raised by the impacted communities, and incorporating comments into the transportation decision-making process were practical. Now, the only reason why I mention that is, is that Phase 1 of this particular plan, which was shared with the CAC, essentially involves educating students in K through 12 programs about mass transit and using alternative modes of transportation. There was a concern that was raised by a couple of the CAC members that were present. I can't remember which board number it was, but it was, I believe, Adriel Lamb was the representative, and he was essentially saying, while this was a good thing, it probably was more important that, given the situation in Oahu, who MPO should be looking to for advice and public participation, essentially should be adults and people who are currently having to drive to work rather than the next generation that already is basically using transitor, being brought to school by their parents in effect. So just wanted to mention that discussion and bring that to the board in case you guys want any follow-up. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for our board member for his report, on his report for Ompo? No questions? Thank you, Board Member, for your attendance and report at the Ompo Meeting. Do I have any other board members' reports for, in regards to any meetings that they have attended? Seeing none, moving along. Some announcements, our next meeting, our next regular meeting is scheduled for Thursday, October 24th, here at the Filipino Community Center at 7:00 p.m. Look forward to seeing you all, and that's it. Meeting adjourned.